Thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're gonna get this meeting started. I believe my colleague will be joining us soon. Um, so this is the study session of June second, twenty twenty-three. It is now five thirty-six P M. We will begin roll call. President Chavez?
Present.
Vice President Cortese?
Here.
Clerk Doe?
On his way.
Member Edeta?
Here.
Member Lee?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, I just became aware and I'm requesting that the records show that we are opening and closing this study session in memory of John Sellarow, who passed away two and a half weeks ago on May fifteen. Uh, he was a teacher of mine. He was a teacher and administrator for more than forty years in the east side. So in his memory.
Thank you for that. Hey, all right. Um, so welcome. Um, so our, our public comment, given that this is a study session, we'll do most of our, our talking during the, um, the actual item for discussion. And at the end, any additional comments that were not shared can be, um, we'll have some time for that then. Um, so then we can go to for members of audience, correct? Right? Right, right, right. Yep. So we'll go to, um, item number three, three point zero one. Um, Superintendent Board Members may request items be removed or consideration carried. This, there's just one item, um, which is, uh, the LCAP. All right. So before we, we go into discussion, I just want to thank everybody once again for being here today. Um, I know our students' last day was yesterday, but many of us are still working, um, whether closing out the year, getting ready for summer school or other things. Um, and I want to ground us in that. A few weeks ago, during the open session portion, um, of our most, most recent board meeting, I stated that along with another board member, um, uh, we'd be meeting with stakeholder groups, um, relating the forthcoming proposed LCAP from the administration so that we can get a better understanding of any concerns and issues um, from stakeholders in a small group setting. That meeting was held this past Friday. And again, I want to thank everyone, um, for your commitment, for showing up to that space and different spaces that have been provided for us, um, to share input. Um, and after hearing and considering the input, um, I thought that a broader district community, uh, the broader district community would benefit from the space, having a public study session. And so for that reason, as board president, I called for a public board study session, which is what we are having today. Um, I also want to publicly acknowledge that the stakeholder group meeting that we had last Friday is exactly what we had last year. In fact, we had two of those meetings. One of them was where myself and my colleague, Manuel, um, were a part of. The other one, my colleague, Von and Brian, um, held. Um, and in addition to that, we're having this study session. So altogether, two more meetings that we had last year. Um, so just wanted to make sure that we noted that. And lastly, um, I'm pretty sure we all around this one conversation. And I'd like to remind everybody that the purpose of the study session is to dive deeper into the item for discussion, which is the LCAP. And given that we've had a few presentations on the LCAP at this point, um, and we have about an hour, that's the hope, uh, for today. I want to make sure that we have as much time to dive into the dialogue, ask questions, and continue to learn as much, um, as possible on this topic. This is not a debate session. This is a learning session, study session, where, again, we're going to be going deeper into the topic and learning more. And so in an effort to start, um, the dialogue not from zero, um, I want to invite each of my colleagues, um, to do a two-minute opening statement. And in this two-minute opening statement, or less, yes, um, you can share anything that is top of mind, like what you've heard, any trends, any questions that you might have. If you have nothing, you just want to go into, um, into the dialogue, then you can just say skip. Um, but this will be an opportunity for each of the board members, um, to say something. And so I'll start with, uh, my colleague, uh, Patty Cortezzi, and then we'll go with Von, Manuel, Brian, and then I will go at the end. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, um, offer my thanks to everybody for engaging in this process. You know, um, things, things evolve. We learn more, we get clarity. And, um, sometimes democracy is messy, and I think that's okay. But I thank everyone for their patience and their, and their persistence. And everybody who's around this table and everybody who's online, um, I get your commitment. Not, not your position. I mean, everyone's got their own position, but like your commitment is, um, evident today. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I want to say that thank you for all stakeholder sitting today, you know, on a Friday evening. Actually, we should be out there, go home and, uh, on the, enjoy our weekend. But that is a commitment, and I'm glad that we have a student governing board. Uh, Representative is Lee Henry today. Uh, we didn't see Lee last time. So it's good to have a voice of a student. And we were bombarded by so many emails, uh, you know, pro and con, but I'd like to, um, take this opportunity to listen in depth more that we can finalize, you know, the decision on LCAP on June twenty-second. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I am, I'm really glad that we're at the table and that we're able to hear each other more. Um, it is my practice and my discipline as a policymaker to keep an open mind, uh, and to keep listening, uh, because I always end, end up understanding more. Um, and I especially like to understand where there's areas of disagreement. It's also part of how I engage, uh, it is to assume the best, uh, about everyone, that they're bringing their contributions, uh, from a place of commitment to our students, uh, and that I can listen in that frame of mind, uh, and not in a negative frame of mind, but I just believe people care. Uh, and it's been very helpful for me. I've been poring through emails and text messages and notes that I've taken from conversations. And it's, I feel like I've been working on a kind of master's thesis here to deconstruct the issues at hand and, uh, learning. So I'm welcoming this opportunity as well. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. I clearly show your commitment and your passion for, for our students in our districts. I, uh, I appreciate the fact that you're coming back on a Friday, and I think this is the third of the series of study sessions that we, uh, we have. Um, like my colleagues, um, I, uh, especially many of her statements really resonate with me. Um, as much as we have different opinion and different positions, end of the day, we are here to learn. Uh, even those, even ideas that are different from, from our own original idea, and then we want to be challenged. I think that what I said in my last study sessions that I held in the same, the same room last Friday was, I here to hear things that I have not known in the past, a perspective that I have not been aware of. And, and, you know, help me challenge myself, uh, because I do want to hear idea that I, I simply may not even thought of. So please, um, educate me, share your insight and share your experience and, 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 um, and sometime when I ask you questions, it's not to challenge you, but also to, to find out a little more in depth. And I hope you would, you would, you would allow me the opportunity to do so. Thank you for being on a Friday afternoon.
Thank you. Um, not much to add. Similar as my colleagues again, just really eager to continue engaging in conversation, dive deeper. Um, so with that, um, opening up the floor, everybody else if, you know, anything resonates specifically or the floor is open for conversation.
Because there has been some beginning conversations and even offline, deeper conversations. What would be really helpful to me is what's come to point for you as kind of a bottom line uh, of how you're understanding something, either supporting it or not supporting it, would have you? All of us already are beyond the first opening, you know, frames of the LCAP. Uh, here's an opportunity to kind of start getting some bottom lines, uh, where we can engage in another round of dialogue.
I've got maybe a request. Is this? It's green. Can you hear me? Is it on? So, can you hear me? Is it? Yeah, there we go. So one practice I like doing on, on these sorts of engagements is, um, stating the opponent's position, um, and asking them to state people who disagree with them. Yeah, exactly. Because if we can't agree, or if we can't understand where everyone the opponent, uh, opposing points of view, then we're just doing this and wasting time. Okay, so what? Real close. That's okay. I'm learning. Uh, so I, I, I guess I'm wondering if there's appetite for that to try to state the position. Okay, I can, I can begin.
So I, I just want to remind us that this is not a debate. Okay, we can dive deeper, ask questions, but I don't want this conversation to start off as opponents, us versus them. This is a dialogue. If there is something that someone doesn't understand, then we could ask that question. Um, I like to offer an understanding that if there is a question that is posed, and it might feel like, oh, I've already answered that, or I thought that was clear, um, that there is a reason why that, that question is asked. And maybe there could be a different way to elaborate, um, on that question itself. But if we can start off from that, from a, a place of learning and not opponents, that would be great, because this is, this is a learning session.
Yeah, I think it would be highly educational
Yeah.
to, to see if I can clearly state, uh, a position that's been put forth from, from the administration and administration to put forth a counter position that we've made, and see if we're hearing each other.
I would find that real valuable.
Yeah, I, I think he could pose, anybody here on this table can pose questions. But again, you know, I want to make sure that this doesn't turn into a debate. However, you know, ask the question that you need to ask, that you feel are necessary. Um, and, and if we can move forward in that way, that would be great.
I don't use the word debate, but I've often used the word deliberation, that when we exchange views and that we have an opportunity to deliberate, better understand each other, clarify, uh, and so on. To me, those aren't debates. They're really dialogues and deliberations on issues, especially that have some complexity.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. This is what this is about. This is about dialogue. This is about engagement. Um, but I, I don't want it to start from a negative place of, yeah, that's just my, my ask.
And that's a great practice that I've used in other processes where I asked, uh, look, someone coming from a perspective to see if they can, uh, state the op, the counter perspective. I call it a counter perspective, and, and see if the folks who hold a counter spec, perspective agree that you got it. You got it correct. You know, and if we could do that, it means that we're, we've done some level of listening to each other.
All right. So to that extent, um, if I were to make the case from what I've heard, like the strongest points from the administration, it would stem from the fact that there's been a significant investment into a high amount of positions through the LCAP, something over a hundred positions. And i- in order for those positions to reach a maximum effectiveness, um, an administrative support supervisor, something along those lines, is essential to target services more effectively or optimally, um, to reach as many students as possible. And given the amount of time right now that administrators need to do that job, given the, the current structure, uh, that's the, 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 the need for an additional position.
I also heard two additional points, administration. I also had two additional point from, uh, in the previous study sessions.
Well, I wonder.
I, I'd like to add to it.
But I'd rather, well, I, is that accurate?
If the administration could respond, does he have it?
Right.
Or is there something missing in his framing?
Yeah, thanks for that. And yeah, you're right. It is over a hundred positions, um, in the LCAP. Sorry?
Hundred and eight, what you said last time.
Okay, yeah. So what we have is, um, and I'll just let, let people know, currently in the LCAP, there are a hundred and four, uh, members, um, certificated members, um, that are paid through the LCAP, eighty-four of those being, I mean, excuse me, eighty of those being full-time positions. So some positions are partially funded, but eighty, um, certificated staff, um, in currently being funded for the total a hundred and four. Um, with our classified staff, there's twenty-one, uh, positions funded through the LCAP, seventeen of those are full-time. The others are partial. Um, and there is currently two, um, administrations, uh, administrators working through that, mainly through the Office of, uh, Student Services. So, yes, um, we believe that there, with, that this, this LCAP has evolved over time. When we first had our first one, we had things called parent-community involvement specialist, something that nobody asked for. But given what was heard in inputs, uh, sessions, that position was created to serve a certain need. Uh, over time, we added counselors. And while, yes, the ASCA model is, I think, two fifty recommended. Um, our current level of counselors is beyond the state average of, I think that's five hundred and twenty-seven. We're at four hundred and thirty, I think about ninety-seven state average, according to ASCA, same institution. Um, we are social workers that we've, we've hired as we've developed, we've seen the needs returning from COVID and added to those. There are teachers on special assignment. Um, there are, uh, utilities to classified specialists, right? Uh, to test, technical specialists that we've added to, to address certain needs. And so, yes, we do believe that there is a level of investment over time that's grown to now over a hundred positions to serve students. Um, that does need a, a level of oversight, but not just for these hundred and four, but across our entire system. The element that I would say I probably want to reiterate is student data though as well. Uh, and so within our students, if we look at our, our shape data, uh, we can see that's, and that's data of students who receive referrals. And so if we look across our district, we can see that ninety-seven point six percent of our kids, it's twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixty, have received zero to one referrals this year. So, going to classes, let's do our thing. However, we do see that we have sixty-four students across our system. And this is the last time we've looked. The Owenburg might be different today or non-existent since they exited school yesterday. Uh, but there are sixty-four students across our system that have had six or more referrals. Right?
Glenn, can I interject and ask, uh, the, the question that I asked was how, how close am I? How close is my characterization?
That the district's. In terms of the oversight, very close. In terms of our rationale as to what the student need is and the unique student need, according to the tools that we have to address those needs, vis a vis this is our staffing and this additional staffing that's in the LCAP, then I would say that's, that's the part of them that I'm adding now. First part, yes, we need targeted, uh, there are, there are things that an administrator can do, such as suspend, call for a student success team, call for an I U P, sign an I U P, direct staff. It's not a good practice for one, you know, for one counselor to tell another counselor, do this, you know, without, without a directive from, from administration. So that's that oversight piece with the, with authority and the accountability that goes into that. Which is why we've changed our evaluation structure to zero in on this targeted data and make sure that our administrative teams are working with staff to target that data. The piece that I'm bringing in, um, is that student piece. So we know that there is those sixty-four students that have had six or more referrals. We know across the system, there's four hundred and fifty-nine that have had two to five referrals. And that's, that's that group that we need to zero in on in terms of, um, getting it targeting and directing those supports to those students for different outcomes. We've talked about illuminate and the different way that we can look at, um, the whole stu, student report that shows if they've got just one D or one referral or one absence in a marking period, or then two to four or five or more. And we are seeing that the groups that are the target of this LCAP funding are socio-economically disadvantaged, are English language learners, and are foster and homeless youth occupy in rate, in greatest numbers, those areas of the warning system. And so we would like to make sure that these, the services that are directed through the LCAP compelled in the LCAP to direct those services. That is part of our recommendation. But I don't, we don't bring an LCAP to just say, we just need an associate uh, principal of tiered student support. We're bringing all these other positions and supports for renewal, which we need to take action on again.
Would you say that I have at least a decent um, um, understanding of what the district's position is, given the articulation of, of the position?
I think that, um, you and I have had an opportunity to exchange this now for probably three times. And I think that you're probably aware of what our position is. Whether we are aligned and totally agreed, but I, I don't know.
I, well, we'll get there. Now, and I guess the, the ask would be, can anyone from the administration side now put forth our position?
What I heard from you in the last meeting is that, um, and when you say, I'm, I'm hearing Estha's position. And I don't have notes in front of me, but what I think I heard, um, last time was that there was some, uh, perception, want to address class size, address, um, some issues within special education program, address what I think you called incentives, what other people call disciplinary responses to student behaviors. If, and I don't know if I've got that incentive and disciplinary responses kind of all right, but I'll use your word incentives, that to incentivize students to do the right thing at school. And I think I also heard that you'd like to see money directed more towards, uh, career technical education, uh, or, uh, I look, um, whether at S V C T E or our campuses. I think those were the four areas that I heard.
So all those elements, yeah, I definitely did, did speak about, but they were all kind of collected in a, in a, in a larger point in that, yes, the incentive structure, right? The, the, the need, the administrative position for the additional administrator um, is ultimately, seems to be a, um, say, a, uh, what would you say, a Band-Aid on a bullet hole sort of, sort of a thing, like, uh, because the incentive structures within the district are as they are, the addition of the administrator is not going to change the incentive structures. And therefore, any gains which we are seeing continuously kind of get worse through the LCAP data. And I understand we're expecting to see worse certain numbers this year when it comes to grad rates and things of that nature, that the addition of a, of a, of a personnel such as a new administrator is not going to do anything to the, the incentive structures. And therefore, it would be better served investing in other areas or changing the incentive structures first to see what kind of a turnaround those could do before you invest into something like an administrator.
So I, I hear just on the incentive structures, I change that before investing in the other. And I guess, um, as a educator and one time a site, site leader, and now in this role, um, I don't believe that there's one singular thing that changes all the outcomes. Um, I believe that it's collective, as a collect, collective effort, collective understanding, understanding for when these incentives are appropriate and utilized, as opposed to say, I can't, but really you could have taken this disciplinary action um, to make sure that our disciplinary actions are supported by resources and supports for that student in their, in their return to school or whatever, post-disciplinary action or incentive, um, that that's in place. So I would not point to any individual aspect of this LCAP and say, that's, that's the one thing. I couldn't just point at counselors. I couldn't point at the social workers. I couldn't just point at the TOSSAs. Nor three years from now, I'm just going to point at an associate principal for tiered student supports. But in putting that as part of the plan, as well as an additional campus monitor, I think that we do go a long way to be able to address climate and safety and holding it up to incentives with support. Absolutely. I believe that this allows the, um, an administrator of tiered, um, student supports allows us to do much better in terms of child find and identifying students that have a disability and that we are allowed to drill, uh, drill in and surround that student to find out if testing is necessary or not. Uh, and that goes a long way with some of our issues in, uh, special ed. We also know that the county is going, is, is, is going to begin reducing the services they offer to students we send to them. And that will mean that more, more students with an I U P, uh, will be, uh, in, in I U Ps that are, uh, with students with disabilities that are a bit more severe, um, that will be needing to serve them and that there will need to be administrative oversight of those additional I U Ps as well and, and that functioning.
But I have to interject.
Can't, I, yeah, go ahead.
Um, the administrative oversight of I U Ps, yes, that's important. Uh, but that, that really seems to be ignoring the main problem when you, when you say anything in, in relation to more I U Ps. Who's going to hold the I U P meetings?
Exactly, right? So we know in our.
What case managers are, I mean, well, yes, I need to talk about sped since, since it was brought up.
Sure.
The, the workload, there's no one that's more overworked in this district than, than, than case managers. No one. I, I don't believe it. And because of that, when we're talking about what could be done, like, what we're, what we're really here, it, it's not simply, uh, a disagreement about the additional administrator. The admin, the additional administrator is, is a, is a conduit for the entire systematic approach that the district's been putting forth. Because it's such an important position, it creates a nice little, um, opportunity to talk about the, the systems of the district. And if you've got case managers, oh, I, I'll just make this on, on the public record. Uh, something we talked about at, at the, the private meetings was when you look at, uh, case manager who takes a mild, moderate ca, uh, case manager, they have a cap at twenty-six, but they can voluntarily take a twenty-seventh or a twenty-eighth or a twenty-ninth. And the district, Tom can correct the numbers here if there's a, uh, a discrepancy, but the numbers that I have is that the district pays fifteen hours, or at least up to fifteen hours of, um, of work time to perform that I U P. The, the, the special education teachers I spoke with said that that's about accurate or low. So if we just take fifteen hours per I U P and multiply that times twenty-sixth, that's three hundred and ninety hours. Their release period, they get one per day. That's less than a hundred and eighty hours in a school year. So if you just start off with the district's numbers alone, they're given an impossible task. And if you're going to talk about the need for administrative support over I U Ps, you have to start by giving the staff responsible to perform the case management, an actual reasonable chance to perform their job.
Yeah, I, I hear that.
Madam President, um, I just want to call a process, you know, point here because our time is limited. And we can continue unpacking the general framework and premises that you're talking about. I find it interesting. I'd like to unpack it more. I don't want to leave this meeting without hearing from other voices or what's at the front of your, your mind and, you know, points that you want to anchor and so on. And if we have time to come back, we'll come back.
Could I just speak to one minute on that? And then I would rather hear a voice other than my own. Uh, that, I hear that on the case management right now that, and we are not negotiating here today, but we do have those numbers in our collective bargaining agreement. That's, that's our current term. If there's an issue that we need to move forward in addressing that, we can.
We have maximum caseload numbers in the, in the contract. We don't have caseload numbers. We have a maximum caseload.
Very good. Like, I totally understood. Uh, and so the, the, the point here in terms of why right now I'm not going to caseload is one, it's, it's already, it's in contract. Secondly, remember the three groups within the LCAP for which this funding is set aside and targeted are English language learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, and foster and homeless youth. It is not, it was not a se, uh, set aside for intent for special education dollars. Why may we need to use other fundings in the future to address caseloads and other issues within special ed? Most likely. The reason it's not included in the LCAP is because it's not a group that, uh, is targeted within, um, the, the funding that is set aside for these purposes and goals and actions.
Do we know how many? I, I just have three questions that hopefully someone can answer. Do we know how many of our English language learners, uh, foster youth and low-income students fall under, uh, I U P services? Until we have that number, I don't know if we can make that claim.
Okay.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Oh. I would like to hear from others at the table for what you would like the board to anchor in our understanding as we get closer to the decision point.
Sure. Um, I obviously agree with everything that's written in the LCAP and think that we should approve it. I want to point out, um superintendent talks about, you know, students with uh referrals and the number of students and then extra administrative support um would help these students. I asked, but I want to point out that we have a lot of students in this district that are not performing, that are falling behind and that are at risk of falling behind that have no discipline referrals. And that this administrative, um, this administrator could help serve those students as well and provide those students and make sure those students are getting the supports that they need because a lot of students are going to class every day. They're not absent. They are actually going to class. They're not getting in trouble. They don't have referrals, but they're still failing a lot of their classes. And that's something that we need to address as a district and as a system. And the, I see this role as being really instrumental in addressing the needs of those students.
And I think as we continue to um with the new law that's coming in, even with our EL students and addressing the long-term ELS and making sure they're successful, that's another uh data point that we haven't, we've looked at, but now it has to be specifically focused uh based on what the state is asking for. And we, like at um Super Creek, we have sixteen hundred EL students total. So that's another piece that we have to continue to look at. And with our focus on the early warning system, when you look at that, it's pretty daunting. And so to have the extra admin to help um move it into the counseling position or the advisor position to help really focus on those students, it really helped us in that area, I think, just to have more people to help push and look at and support students. I was just talking to my ESTA team today and uh my MTSS coordinator is fantastic. She pushes curriculum. She pushes professional development. She works with students. She develops camps and we work on all these things together. And then another S member said, yeah, but she, she can push all this stuff out, but the teachers can just say, huh, that's just another teacher telling us what to do. It, she doesn't have the authority to direct us to do it. And so that's the other piece too that we, it slips by a little bit is that that extra person to just have a little more authority that said, well, Kelly said that you need to go do this. So all right, let's do it. Um, so I think that's something that hasn't been brought up yet.
I mean, in some ways, we're hearing what we heard in the first meeting that occurred Friday. Uh, and it's one of the reasons why I was just calling a little timeout because I've had some exposure to that and I wanted to deepen my understanding. So I'm not clear at the moment what would be my.
You mind if I ask Kelly a question?
She's running the meeting.
One more time?
Mind if I ask Kelly a question?
Sure, this, this is to, to engage with each other.
Kelly, are you, uh, is it your position that admin can direct teachers on curriculum?
We can't. Well, I think we can direct and we, not mandate, but we can sure push and like right now, what we're working on is common assessments and common standards and within our course-like subjects. And I think when the administration is involved with that, it just helps teachers to have a better understanding of where we're going and what it means and how it ties back to our single plan and our last reports. So I think, yeah, coming from admin, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I do just want to act, it's not add the piece that um curriculum for the most part is dictated by the state of California, right? And so actually, as part of the LCAP, one of the LCAP priorities, just as a reminder, is that we're adhering to the implementation of state standards, right? And so just as a clarification point that that's actually part of what is included in terms of what we need to make sure is happening as part of the LCAP. And so it's not um necessarily like a question of can you direct, it's just that, that accountability piece to make sure that we are implementing the standards and supporting the teachers and being able to do so in an effective way.
That's, that was the point of the question is because the, one of the justifications was because an administrator could basically push in certain curriculum into a classroom that say an MTSS TOSA could not. I just wanted to bring that up to everyone's attention that administrator has no more authority than an MTSS TOSA to dictate the curriculum of a teacher unless that teacher's not following uh the California content or common course standards.
And really what we're talking about is strategies to help them move that curriculum, right? And so it's about pushing the strategies and giving them the tools to be successful in those situations.
I hear you, I hear you. But the main justification that I heard was because the administrator can do something that a TOSA cannot. And I would differ that from a teacher in a classroom, I would be far, far more likely to listen to a TOSA than I would in admin about proper structures for my classroom.
From the HR standpoint, though, the minister has evaluative rights versus the teacher is not.
Correct. Yeah. And that, that's, that's a difference, but that wasn't the point that was made.
When the point was made about what administrators can do, I heard of the bullet point list by the superintendent and I didn't hear uh directing curriculum, you know, of a, of a teacher.
Well, again, it's uh working with the curriculum, helping them to underhave standards that are driven by the state that hit the LCAP. And then the strategies to help students get better at what they're doing and, and, and focus on lesson planning that helps the student and focus on the student that's not being successful, focusing on our F and D students, our D students to get to that C late rate. We keep talking about the East Side Promise and getting our students to that C level. And we're only at about forty percent. It's over creek at that right now. So we have some growth there. And an administrator, I think, helps to bring that to light and to help push those strategies and strengthen the curriculum and strengthen the the courses and strength, strengthen teaching.
It that portion of the forty percent and clarify that, what that forty, forty percent of what exactly? Sorry.
The A to G completion, A to G completion. That's at Silver Creek.
And Thomas, I just want to, what you said, like you as a teacher are more likely to listen to your colleague that's also a teacher giving, you know, talking about strategies. And I totally agree that a lot of teachers are just like you. But there are teachers that are saying, nah, I'm going to wait for the administrator to tell me to do. And, and that's a reality. It would be great if they would just listen to, you know, the TOSA and be like, okay, that's what we want to do. That would be wonderful. It's not happening.
Okay, um, I, I want to bring us to the time. It's six fourteen. Time has passed by really fast. And I know we're, we're gonna follow the, yeah, we started a few. Yep, a- and time is passing quickly. And I also want to acknowledge that there are some folks around the table who haven't necessarily said much and it's up to you all, right? If um this is prompting any questions, any comments, um, I just don't want us to get to the end of the meeting and not, for folks not to have had an opportunity to make a comment, ask a question. Um, is prompting anything for anybody?
Um, I have. Julio Pardo was classified employees. I don't speak up a lot when people are talking and when people keep talking, I don't want to interrupt them. Guys continue to talk. I don't want to interrupt. But I'll be honest. I said this last time. If you want to hear us, possibly you should have meetings with the separate groups because an hour is being dominated by basically one group here. And the rest of us are just waiting to hopefully get something in. All I want to say is that I don't necessarily, I'm against, I'm not against getting this, this extra administrator only because I've been there in the past where we had someone, an extra administrator on our campus. And it seemed to be working, but we didn't give enough time to develop. But I would say that a fourth administrator had better have results within two years. And people say, that's not out of time. Yes, it is. Because one year is your baseline. The second year, you better see some improvement. If you don't, then why stick with the baseline that's not working? And so that, to me, that's a waste, that's a waste. Talk about, you know, I don't want to get into the philosophical part. We start talking about curriculum here. In this district, it has to be a philosophical change in this district. It was brought up, but it's about the fact that we constantly push our kids. We say that we want college and career, but really this district pushes college. And that's what it does because you're putting kids into classes that they are not prepared for. And you don't offer them classes that can give them the, the, the base knowledge they need to be successful in those higher classes. You get, you put kids in Algebra One that don't know how to add fractions. You put kids in English that can't read. How can we expect these students to do all those classes when they're not prepared for them? And all that, everyone starts saying, well, then you're going to do tracking and you're going to have these students in these classes that, you know, you're putting in there. No, that doesn't have to happen. There are ways you can put students in the proper class they belong in. And when they can be successful in those classes, now they will come to school. But when they go into a class that they're not ready for and that they start failing right away, within three months, now you have the roamers because they give up. They just walk around campus because they have nothing to do. They say, well, I could be in class and sit there. And that's the quiet ones that don't cause problems, but they're not learning anything. So then we have the roamers that disturb people. We have the quiet ones that don't, but they're all failing. They are all failing. My concern, excuse me, my concern right now is regarding the roamers because that's what people talk about safety. The roamers are out there because we're told that we need more supervision on campus. Truthfully, hiring a second, uh, I would say, yes, of course, it's, it's another classic position by hiring another campus monitor. But we just mentioned how many a hundred and something people that are supposedly working with students. What are they doing during the day? Is my question. Are they in the office working with the students or are they in the office waiting for the students to come to them? Why can't some of those people, why can't this new director that you want to hire, this new associate principal say, you know what? You three people are going to be out there first period and third period, talking to kids that you see roaming and get them to come talk to you. You three people are going to be out there during fifth and sixth period, talking to these kids, get them to come and see you. And then you don't need to have that second uh campus monitor at every campus because I don't think every campus needs one. What I pushed for last time that doesn't show in here, but we've been asking for years and this, this affects all students and it affects classified, I'll admit that, is having that extra health clerk that would make it so we have a health clerk at every campus. Because that health clerk by being there in every campus takes care of all students. I don't care if they're homeless. I don't care if they're not homeless. I don't care if they're ELL students. It takes care of all students. When those students are in trouble, some of them is because they took the wrong medicine, which is illegal. I'll put it that way. And we have to take care of it with a nine one one. But a lot of them, something happens because it's just natural for them and it's in their, it's in their uh, their health forms. And the health clerk knows that, but the office people don't. They don't know what to do. And so they have to call nine one one right away. Or they're trying, a kid comes in and says, I'm sick. And you take it away at least twenty minutes away from those people in the office because they got to call home and try to get hold of somebody. You got to call someone at work, try to get hold of somebody. They're neglecting their own work, their attendance that might not be coming in on time for these people because they have to take care of other issues. And so throughout the day, if you get two or three kids coming in and now they can't get hold of anybody, just stay here with us, with us and we'll watch you. And they have to watch that sick kid to make sure they're okay. So they're constantly, are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay? Takes away from them. So by having a health clerk, the health clerk can take care of them properly and make sure they try to get a hold of somebody to come in and it allows the other people to do their work. And again, if you want to bring in all campus monitors for every, every site, okay, I'm okay with that as long as you bring the health clerks in also. The health clerks to me are, are one of the basic things we need in the campuses. And regarding curriculum, you know, that's kind of off topic here, but you have got to look at how you put these kids in classes. I think I said this last time. Many years ago, the district did the same thing. And this person that came to us from the district office said, well, we want to put the kids in the, in the proper classes. I said, no, you want to put the kids in the classes you want them to take, not in the classes that they want to take or that they need to take. Because that's where a lot of our students have problems. They need to take certain classes and we're not offering those classes to them.
Thank you, Julio.
Can I make sure that I, I've heard it correctly and check in on what I've heard?
And I want to make.
Do with that group because they said we, we approve what's in the LCAP. That didn't sound like opposition. Uh, so.
Great. And a- after you, Glenn, I, I want to make sure that Lee has an opportunity to speak as well.
Lee up next. Absolutely. What I, what I heard you say is that you're not opposed to the fourth administrator. I then heard you speak about what you, one idea we, what you would want that fourth administrator doing in terms of directing the personnel that's already been hired, another personnel in sight. That is definitely part of that plan, but a part of it. The other part is making sure that we're meeting with different student groups who have different needs and that we can do that. I also heard that there was some um uh, a mention that you'd like to see more CTE classes or classes that other students might be interested in als- as well as that there are classes in which kids are being struggled, but right now they're having a hard time meeting those, those demands of that course. And that we need to look in, in the future, we need to continue to look about how we bridge those gaps and make sure that those are classes that not students only just want to be in, but also can succeed in. Uh, the other thing I heard you say is that on my campus monitors, which is in the current plan for each site, you're saying maybe not at every site, but definitely there is a need for the good of students and as well as dealing with attendance more effectively to add potentially add health clerks to that.
Almost.
Almost. Okay, ninety-five, ninety-eighty-two, where to get?
Regard, regarding the extra administrator, what I said was last year, last time I said this also, I'm not going to fight that. I can see where the need could be. However, so something that I would like this board to consider that you have two years to prove it. That's it, two years, because that's a lot of money and that money could be used for a lot of other things like, and I'll be, I'll be blunt. Intro to algebra, general math, basic English, I don't mean basic English sped, I mean, basic English that kids could use. Because our district doesn't offer those classes to kids and a lot of them need it. Unfortunately, from some of the schools they come from, they are not prepared for the level of classes we want them in. And that's where some of this LCAP money could probably go to. Which, and I'll agree with the one thing with the uh regarding the special ed teachers, I think I brought up last time too, they need a second period to do IEPs because I, I work with some of them and they don't do twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine IEPs. We have, we have such a transient population. Some of them doing thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine IEPs. Means, and then they can't get hold of the parents to hold them. And it's, it's so frustrating for them because they, they don't have the hours in the day to meet with these people. And if they do, now you got to get a substitute so that they can fill that class. They don't want to take that substitute somewhere from their own time, but they have to. So again, uh, those are the things and regarding the campus monitors, like I said, if you want to put a camp monitor every site, that's fine with me, but I still want those health clerks at every campus. So it's not like I want to trade one for the other.
Better.
But if that's what it comes down to, I would like a health clerk every campus and as many campus monitors on every campus as possible.
Thank you for filling in my listening gap.
Thank you. Um, Lee.
Sure.
Well, well, what was it that was there a moment ago?
Oh, I was just going to ask, um, like specifically, um, I think, I think one of you said earlier, uh, what was it? Strategies for focusing more on students. I was wondering if you could give like some specific examples.
Yeah. So some of the specific examples that we're talking about are around the interventions, right? So many of, of our classes and former math teacher here, right? There's a lot of direct instruction that happens, which I think is important, right? I'm sure you're very familiar, Lee, with. You sit in your classrooms in rows and there's that direct instruction aspect that happens for you to gain the content. So some of the strategies or interventions would be the use of, for example, formative assessments, which is one of the things that I brought as part of the research and expertise that goes into the LCAP. And so when a teacher teaches a new concept, how was it then, what's the strategy to assess that the student got it without having it to be like part of, that's going to impact your, that grade, right? It doesn't have to be graded. It's checking for understanding, right? So if I taught um two-step equations and I did some examples and I'm going to quickly assess my kids through um a quick little problem. Hey, do this one little problem right here. Put up your whiteboards. Let me see how many of you got it. Oh, my goodness, Miss Marquez, you didn't teach it very well because eighty percent of your kids did not get it right. So rather than just kind of moving on to the next, it's stopping, pausing and either reteaching it or taking a different approach to that, right? So one of the, the strategies were you, the use of formative assessments and then using the information from the formative assessments to decide to reteach that particular concept or say, you know what, only two of the kids didn't get it. So let me give, you know, the, the thirty-five kids that I have here that I've done it to some problems for them to continue or some work to continue. And let me go and work specifically with these two kids. Um, another strategy is to bring in project-based learning, right? And so when you talk about the career aspect of um the work that we do, right? Um, again, going through the lens of math because that's what I taught. Um, bringing in projects where you have to utilize the math skills, right? And so if I have to use my measurement skills, rather than just doing fifty problems on measuring, I could actually bring in a project where I'm actually u- utilizing those measurement skills or whatever. on measuring, I could actually bring in a project where I'm actually u- utilizing those measurement skills or whatever skills it is that I've, um, you know, I taught my kids to be able to then put forth that project. So those are just some examples.
The other piece too that we concentrate on at, uh, at Silver Creek is speaking, writing, reading and listening, so the swirl. And how much time of each of those categories is happening in the classroom on a daily? So that it's not just lecture and the kids are just listening, that the kids are practicing speaking and then more writing and reading. And so we try to push twenty-five percent of that of all four of those categories. That also helps, um, with our AL students, because that is part of their assessment when we read designate them as well. So, um, those are some pieces and so strategies on how do I s- make my class look like that and give of different writing assignments or reading assignments in all the curricular and all the subject areas.
Okay, so, so I understood the, the part about the, what the teacher would have to do specifically, like, you know, you're, the, the project and then the, the assessments. So, um, how would an admin be able to help a teacher through with that, like, like give them advice on their, on their classes and their curriculums?
Yeah, so I think that's through the professional development and the collaboration that happens at each of the school sites. So each of the school sites have a professional development committee. Um, and then with the work with, where the TOSA, the MTSS, uh, TOSA is part of it, but really it's directed by or guided, um, facilitated by the administrator. So the administrator, right through knowing the goals that they have as part of their single plan for student achievement, would be able to work with their leadership groups, which include a professional development committee of each of their sites to determine, okay, based on, for example, snapshot of classroom visits or if we decided to do instructional rounds, then we've identified that these are the areas where we need to have. So what did that, uh, coordination look like? Then you look at the outcomes. So then you look at the end of the first grading period, you see, okay, how many of our kids continue to surface as not having passed the classes? So what are those additional interventions that have to happen? And if we see a pattern that it's in the math, right, let's say at the end of the first grading period, the majority of our kids who are in the early warning system are getting a D or an F in math, then that tells the administration that they need to support the math department and being able to, to, to figure out what those interventions and strategies have to be to be able to improve those outcomes.
Also, honey, there's, there's always an existence of what we call the middle band of students, the ones who don't necessarily do enough to get in trouble and to be on anyone's radar, don't do well enough to get the attention. They kind of just exist and, and, and they're a part of our, every school that we have. And a lot of times these students who are part of this middle band kind of get forgotten. And I think part of the role of this administrator is then dig through the data, dig through how the student is doing, reach out to them and really find out, you know, what kind of help they need to go to the next level, right? Because without that, they're kind of just perpetually stuck, they're not doing enough to get in trouble, they're not doing enough to advance. But we need to address that middle band that sometimes gets forgotten too, and this person can really dive in and just really assess what that middle band of student really needs.
Thoughts, Lee? Examples helpful? Great, okay.
Before we move on, I just want to, I've got a lot of clarifications on some of the, some of the items that Mr. Pardo and Mr. Britton, I said earlier. Uh, starting with the Pardo, what, the, the thing what you asked was about the one hundred and four was that what do they do? That was the question that was asked at least twice in your, in your statements, uh, asking about the students. Uh, that's what I thought I heard. And that you, you believe that it was the roamer that causing a number of issues that, at the district. And a third thing was that the, the students are, are not taking the class that, that they want to take or they need to take, but rather the districts want them to take. Those are the three points that I didn't hear from Mr. Vendo, is a variation of that, but not quite what you said. Am I closing my understanding of what you said here?
Well, regarding the hundred and four, I know what they're supposed to do. Okay, I'm just wondering.
That was rhetorical question on your part, I get, I get that, but, but I, I, I do want to emphasize that point because I think that was your, your contentions uh, into, into my rhetorical statements.
My point is that, working with groups, they shouldn't just be waiting for the groups to come to them, they should go out looking for those groups that are on campus. That's my point.
And if I can go back to Mr. Britton, that was a couple back, you were talking about incentive structure. You're not referring to an incentive structure only with the students, but the incentive structures for the performance of administrations, is that my understanding?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, um, because I, I believe the administration uh, from the district down creates some of their own mess. And what I mean by that is we've had examples, um, of administrators telling their staff members that they can't do anything about drugs on campus. Uh, administrators telling staff members that there's nothing they can do about roamers, when clearly there is. I didn't know this until about a month ago. But you can actually transfer a student involuntarily to a continuation school, a place that might be better suited for that student. For truancy, for chronic truancy. We're never told this sort of thing, it's not to say that you need to do it. But if we're never told what all the possible options are, then we're automatically cutting off certain tools that could benefit some of our most at youth, uh, I'm sorry, at-risk students. So, yeah, I, when it comes to the incentive structures, it's really for everyone. Staff members, teachers are not incentivized to engage with students outside of the classroom, because anytime they do and they're told to F off and they report it, nothing happens. Um, staff members are not incentivized to walk into student bathrooms. Even though I've done it before and I've caught students smoking, because when we do report and we get, when we get involved, there's no follow-up. There's no, there, there's a lack of, of what, why am I doing this? And this word gets around to other students. That was attested at, at the private, uh, meeting that we had with the other students, is that, is that word gets around to other students. And when this happens, students come to the conclusion that, well, they can do a lot of things that they know that they shouldn't be doing. And this creates a situation on our campuses where the people in authority no longer feel comfortable exercising that authority. And so that's some of what I mean by, until the incentive structures are fixed, you can put as many personnel as you want on the situation, but it's not going to change the underlying problem of, of, of what's causing a lot of extra time and an extra need on behalf of fresh, the professionals on, on campus.
I don't, I'm, my thoughts aren't formed yet, but, um, I just want to make sure that we use some caution and like, I mean, the problems that you're, the issues that you're pointing to are complex. And so I don't, I don't, not sure that there's a way to sort of define them in simple terms. So I don't think it's administration creating prob- creating these problems. Uh, you know, you were saying, administration creates their own mess, I'm not sure I concur with that. So your other points are well taken, but I just, I want to make sure that we're not getting into a place that's beyond the scope of what this group is about.
Check, or are you gonna say something?
I would just say I stand by the comment and that policies made by district and sites can have that effect.
Jack?
I, I know we're pretty much out of time, but I'm not here to speak, I'm, I have my thoughts reserved for June eighth and I can't wait to put them out there at that time. But what I really wanted us to hopefully recognize is the people that are here that are not really required to be and then have not had an opportunity to speak.
Oh, oh, I, I'm getting to that, I, I'm just making sure that we, we have what we say, what is top of mind, knowing that there's still probably more, um.
And if there's anyone online.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna address them right now in a minute. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't cut anybody off in the middle of their comments, which sounds like where Patty, did, did I cut you off? Your comment, no? Okay. All right. Great. Okay, all right, so I believe we have a few, um, online public comments. So Mary, if we could read those, please?
Online public comment from staff member Jennifer Black. I am an English teacher at Oak Grove High School. Our administrators' jobs have only grown more difficult over the last few years. However, the jobs of teachers and classified staff have also grown more difficult over the past few years. And the LCAP many should both support our vulnerable and struggling students and reduce workloads for adults. Both students and staff would benefit from paying our classified staff more so that all classified positions are regularly filled. Having a full-time sub available at each site so that teachers don't have to sub on their preps and administrators don't have to waste time organizing and directing teachers to sub on their preps. Having either an additional campus monitor or an additional advisor to support behavior responses and campus safety. Reduce caseloads for special ed case managers. Reduce caseloads for counselors, especially reduce numbers of five oh four plans to manage per counselor. Thank you for considering a variety of ideas. Next public comment is from staff member Debbie Leshen. Dear board members, I'm encouraging the board to consider hiring another social worker at each site rather than an additional administrator. Students need more support that it, than is available currently. A social worker could supervise interns, provide facilitation for restorative justice circles, reach out to students that are not attending class and provide backup for a special education therapeutic classroom. In light of these needs, I think resources would be best spent on direct services for our students who deserve skillful, compassionate support. That is the end of online public comment.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Clint, is, is there anybody online that has their hand raised?
Yes, we do have one person who has raised their virtual hand.
Okay, there are two, two minutes.
Anthony Cardo, are you, are you, can you unmute yourself and, uh, introduce yourself and when you begin speaking, we'll start your two minutes.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, everybody. I have a simple request to the goal of a study session for information, but here's the background to it. When we talk about more efficient use of district resources, uh, it, of course, it's good to think of new things to do, but it's also good to tighten up, as we've said several times, existing tools that we have, given that we want, uh, that we have a huge overarching enrollment and safety problem, which is, which as we speak is economically, politically complicating our discussion. Given that we want more efficient use of district-wide, therefore needing sort of support for students that would have district-level mobility, um, rather than site. And given, um, that we have parent outreach that we've had in the past. My question is, can the district confirm beyond the big numbers in the LCAP? What is the district have to offer us in this LCAP cycle for, uh, outreach staff? Specifically for identification of student needs as, as mentioned by Julio and specifically for identification of, um, of housing situations, et cetera, et cetera. If you look at it on paper, the amount of time it would take to investigate this thoroughly easily outstrips the amount of, uh, hours in a day that we ask of our teachers or our admin. So what, again, to restate the question, what resources are we, what new resources are we going to be uh, offering the students in terms of family outreach? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any like, uh, speaker requests, so I am assuming that there are no speaker requests here in person, is that a correct assumption?
There's no more online.
No more online, great. Oh, I see one there. From afar. Oh, you're feeling it, okay. Want to make sure that everybody who took the time. Yeah, 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 you could come on up. Yes. Yeah, thank you, um, so if, we'll have two minutes if you can state. Yeah, okay. Stay ready for the record, please.
Yeah, yeah, my name's Christina Helmer, I'm a staff member at Independence. Um, here's my thoughts. I hear you, I hear that you want to have an administrator, I get it. Um, here's my issue, is you haven't actually said what that administrator is going to do. Like physically daily do, because currently I have administrators and they don't do. Like, you're right, they all do, we love them, but they don't do. So when you're talking about student engagement and involvement, I want administrators that are gonna go out and talk to students. You're willing to hire someone, but our current admin don't do. So what are you going to add another admin to not do? And if you want those admins to do that, this new admin, why are we not expecting the current admin to do the same thing? Right? You're adding a position and telling me that those admins are gonna go out and do these things? Why is our current admin not doing those things? And if that's the expectation, then district and board, you're doing a really bad job setting that expectation because it's not happening. Just like MTSS was talked about as a pullout and a TOSA, they don't work with students. They don't actively have students in their room. They pull, they pull out students once we give surveys and things like that, but they're not on a daily basis involved with students. Hire people who are involved with students if you want student outcomes to be different. Social workers, nurse. I don't know. Campus monitor, great. Anyone who's going to actually daily deal with students in the capacity you're talking about is not an admin. By definition, we have them. Go to any site, they're not happening in the way that you're saying they're going to happen. Tell me exactly what's going to happen to this new admin and how they are going to do it? That's what I want to see. Haven't heard it, been here an hour. Thank you.
You, Christina. I believe that's our only public comment. All right. Where's this agenda?
So, Madam President.
Go ahead.
I just, I, I want to recognize the limitations of a Friday study session that's basically an hour, a little over. Uh, it's definitely a limitation, but I think it's important that we did have this. Uh, it's not over. Uh, we're still listening, we're still receiving information and comments, uh, you know, this is a very, it's a very important topic with some incredible, uh, implications in every direction. Uh, so with all the limitations of this gathering, I'm grateful that we had it and I'm all ears to still keep learning on, on this matter.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for saying that, um, the, similar sentiment here. I really appreciate everybody spending their Friday evening here with us. Um, again, um, we have two more opportunities, um, to speak on this issue, June eighth, we have our public hearing and June twenty-second, um, when we will be, um, making a decision on the LCAP. Um, and with that, it is six forty-three, the study session is adjourned.